I'd like to call the July meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for our invocation, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Jimmy Rogers, would you please lead us in our invocation this evening?
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for everything that you give us. We're especially thankful, Lord, for these children in this county. We're thankful, Lord, that they have an opportunity, they have the freedom to get education, to learn. And we pray, Lord, that you be with us each and every day, the teachers, the staff in these schools, that you give them the tools they need and the ability they need to teach these children and be with these children each day as they come to school. Lord, it won't be long. We will be back in school. And we pray, Lord, that during the summertime, you prepare us as well as we can be prepared to have a great year with education of the children of this county. Be with the parents and be with the families. Lord, be with this board as we make decisions each time that affect the lives of the children, the staff, the citizens of Haywood County. Guide us and direct us in all that we do, Lord, and we will always give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Board members, our next board meeting will be held here at the Education Center at 7:00 PM on August the 12th on a regular schedule. Are there any other announcements? We have a bingo night coming up, I believe, September 21st. So if you'd like to play bingo, it's for a good cause. It's the Haywood County Schools Foundation. I put it in my calendar today, and I'll take a ticket. Well, I'll be working, but I'll still buy a ticket, okay?
I'll have a ticket.
Okay. Also, I understand that Tuscoa has their drawdown coming up also in September. I know they're starting to sell the tickets on September the 14th, so support that. And whenever Pisgah has theirs, they have theirs using the wintertime, please support theirs, so equal billing.
Springtime.
It's in the springtime?
In April, yes.
In April. Any other announcements, board members? I have one. I would like to welcome Mr. Stephen Kirkpatrick back after some uncalled-for surgery or just... We appreciate that you're back in good health, as best could be expected.
Thank you.
And the board was thinking about you, even though we didn't know about it till after the fact.
Thank you.
But I'm glad that you're back with us, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? One agenda adjustment. To help facilitate things as we move along, I'm going to have a brief recess between number six and number seven, okay? Now, at this time, the board would like to recognize Ms. Joan Ferrara. And Dr. Garrett, would you meet me in the front?
Good evening. Thank you Chairman Francis, board members, Dr. Ann, Dr. Nolte, staff, parents, guests, and students. It is a privilege to come before you tonight to recognize some of our Wayzle Middle School and one Meadowbrook Elementary student and their coaches for outstanding athletic accomplishments this year. As we talked last month in our Continuous Improvement Performance Plan, our big emphasis in special education has been on meaningful inclusion and strengthening parent-community partnerships. I think tonight, when you see the presentation about Project Unify and the Special Olympics at the state level, you'll see this kind of a recognition of the highlight of these efforts. So without further ado, I would like to introduce you to one of the coaches of these teams that will be recognized tonight. Linda Estes is an exceptional children's teacher for students in grades six through eight at Wayzle Middle School, and she has been the mastermind behind many of the innovative things that have been accomplished for students with moderate to severe learning challenges. Linda is a dedicated and committed professional who thinks outside the box. It's my honor to work with her and introduce her to you tonight. Please welcome Linda Estes. And Linda, the board would like to recognize you for coaching the second-place state cheerleading team. As I'll turn it over to you, and you can tell them about Project Unify and what your students have accomplished this year.
Thanks very much. Good afternoon. I am Linda Estes. I teach at Wayzle Middle School. And this past year, our school became involved in something called Project Unify. So you may want to know, what is Project Unify? Project Unify is an education-based project that uses sports to activate young people to develop school communities where all youth are agents of change, fostering respect, dignity, and advocacy for people with intellectual disabilities. So how did Project Unify affect Wayzle Middle School? We were able to do buddy readers program. We were able to do a unified cheerleading team, unified football teams. We did a Stop the R Word campaign. We did the Wayzle Christmas Parade. We coordinated with peer helpers for adapted PE, and we did a Special Olympics victory party. Now, our school was awarded a $1,000 grant to help us coordinate all these projects. And the picture that you see was in May, our school set up a table where we had students come and sign pledges that they would stop using derogatory languages such as the "R" word or other bullying phrases, and all of the students in the school signed the pledge. So that's what you see in the Our cheerleading team, it's kind of evolved for the past four years, and this year, we cheered for football, basketball, and wrestling matches. We had 12 students that participated in a statewide Special Olympics cheer competition in Charlotte, and we spent the night in a hotel, which was a pretty big deal. Our students participated with unified partners at the competition, and we won the silver medal in our division. And there's some pictures on the screen. The one in the top right was the motel. And that was our team before and after we competed. Now, I would like to award certificates to those cheerleaders before we move on. And I will call their name one at a time. Coach Parton, would you like to come help me? Maddie Barfield, who is not here. Elizabeth Boyce, she is also not here. Mateline Boyd. Georgie Ford, who is not here. Lindsay Goodson is also not here. Gracie Jenkins. Sierra King is not here. Shadola Mitchell. After cheerleading, we decided that we weren't finished, so we formed two flag football teams. Coach Gibbs, who cannot be here tonight, Coach Parton, who was with me, and Coach Clifford Mills were the coaches for the teams. We had 18 different students that participated in a statewide competition in May that was held at the Carolina Panthers' practice facility. The Mountaineer Black Team brought home the silver medal, and the Mountaineer Gold Team brought home the bronze medal. This is a group shot of the team after they ran through the big cat's mouth at the Carolina Panthers' facility. Okay, the students that participated were Elizabeth Boyce, she is not here tonight. Lindsay Goodson, she is not here. Max Keener is also not here. Skylar Mauer is not present. Michael Reynolds is not present. Josie Ward. Okay, and the next team would be Chris Omsler. Maddie Barfield is not present. Mateline Boyd. Robbie Bryson, who is not present. Georgie Ford is not present. Jacob Greenarch is not Jordan Shelton and Brent Turner are not present. I would also like to recognize Coach Parton Finally, we were able to participate in some statewide track and field events. Three students from our county participated in the regional, state, and state track and field Summer Olympic Games held in Raleigh on the first weekend of June. These students traveled with adult athletes. They participated in track and field events, and they spent the night in a dorm. This is a picture of our students in the front with our county adult athletes in the back, and John Gattan's in the middle. Now, I'm going to recognize those students. Chris won the gold medal in the 25-meter run. He won the silver medal in the 50-meter run and a bronze medal in the softball throw. Lydia participated and won seventh place in the 100-meter race, and she qualified in the 200-meter run and 100-meter walk. She did sprain her ankle, but she participated very well. Thank you, Lydia. Austin won the gold medal in the 800-meter run... Hold on, Austin. A gold medal in the In conclusion, Project Unify helped Wayzle Middle School be able to promote these activities for inclusion and for all of our students. For the first time in years, a group of students from Haywood County was able to compete in the North Carolina Special Olympics Summer Games. Thank you, board.
Before we finish up tonight, Haywood County Schools and Special Olympics have had a longstanding relationship. But this year, the county coordinator, John Gattan, is excited... I mean, he was motivated to take Special Olympics opportunities for our kids to a new level. And like Linda said, for the first time, we sent student-athletes to Raleigh for the state games, which is a huge deal because John has to, you know, get them to the regional qualifying events and then arrange all of the transportation to that. So I want to publicly thank John for what he's done for our students. He served as a volunteer coordinator for Special Olympics for several years. A lot of people think of Special Olympics as the countywide track and field event we have the first Friday of every May, but it's a year-long thing, and they do things like bowling and bocce and golfing and swimming and basketball. John recently turned over the county coordinator duties to Tim Petrie from the recreation center, but he's going to continue to coach Special Olympic sports. I want to... Would you like for you to please join me in publicly thanking John for the opportunities and experiences he's given our student-athletes and their families over the years? And John, if you'll come up here, the Board of Education would like to present you with a certificate of appreciation. And it says, "The Haywood County Board of Education's Certificate of Appreciation presented to John Gattan for his leadership and coordination of Haywood County Special Olympics and his commitment to the students and staff of Haywood County Schools." And then it ends with a Special Olympian pledge. "Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt." Thank you, John.
I'm going to try to take the lesson from your grandmother. All right? Thank you. It was a ball working with these guys, and I'm going to do what I wanted to do for probably the last six years, is just stay the humble coach. It's a lot of fun. It's very rewarding. You guys cost me too many medals, though. We're going to take a different group. All this gold and silver stuff. It's been a lot of fun. And I would also add that we don't... We added an award called Athlete of the Year a couple of years ago, and we do it at different school levels. But the thing we don't have is a Coach of the Year Award. Well, you have the Coach of the Year Award in the school system. Linda Estes is just a superstar. Yeah, I Blake the next I got a big Yankee mouth, and I'll be quiet in a minute. But Special Olympics make a big... Special Olympics makes a big deal about how many sports do you add in a county program over a year. And I described this year as the manna-from-heaven year. I mean, all of a sudden, you blink, and you've got a cop on top that raises $11,000 for a Special Olympics program. And I answer the telephone call, and they say, "Well, about your flag football program?" I say, "What?" They say, "Well, you know, that goes with the cheerleading program." I say, "What?" I said, "Where do they come from?" Well, you know, I don't know what else. I hope they put in yachting, because she'll go find a way to do that, too. She's a superstar, and she added two programs. She and her staff added that to Haywood County. And there aren't many programs in North Carolina that did that this year. So thank God for small blessings. Ms. Linda did a wonderful job, and I thank you very much for this.
Thank you all so much for your participation, your hard work in the Special Olympics. Rhonda, would you like to say anything? I see you gleaming over there.
It's... I've always said I love Christmas, but the day of Special Olympics is my favorite day.
Thank you. With that, we'll have a brief five-minute recess. Call the meeting back to order. Next on our agenda is some special recognition. It's very exciting. I'd like to recognize Dr. Ann Garrett to meet me at the front.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're very proud of our financial department, and they have received a very prestigious award from the State Department. At this time, I'd like to share that with you. Haywood County Board of Education's Certificate of Appreciation presented July 30, 2013, to Haywood County Schools Finance Department. The Haywood County Board of Education acknowledges and extends sincere appreciation for your hard work and dedication in achieving the State Board of Education Award for Excellence in Financial Also, at this time, I would like to give each of them or present each of them with a certificate. Haywood County Board of Education's Certificate of Appreciation presented July 13, 2013, to Mr. Bob Phillips. The Haywood County Board of Education acknowledges and extends sincere appreciation for your hard work and dedication in achieving the State Board of Education Award for Excellence in Financial Management for the 2011-2012 school year. Mr. Phillips, congratulations. Angie Gardner had class tonight, so she is not with us, so if you will give this to her, Mr. Phillips. Ms. Tina Nolan. Mrs. Brenda Mills. And Ms. Amanda Robinson.
I'd just like to thank my department for all their hard work. As you all know, two years ago, a little over two years ago, we went through a complete reorganization of the department, and we knew we had a tough road ahead of us. But to achieve this reward and the award in the second year, I think it's quite an achievement, and I owe a lot to my department. I appreciate them all very much.
I'd like to say on behalf of the board, congratulations to the finance department. I don't know who you know, but they actually lined up in order. I mean, they're so organized. I'd just like to say, I live real close to the Board of Education building. I drive by there quite often, either going to work, not spying. But I kid you not, these folks work long hours. They work long and hard hours, each and every one of you, and I appreciate it. And I know this board appreciates the fact that you go above and beyond the call of duty. Bob's reorganization means that we lost people. There was... Yes, it was reorganization, but we lost funding, we lost people, and these folks have stepped up to the plate, and not only stepped up to the plate, but have done it in an excellent manner. And for that, I congratulate them on the fine work they do. Thank you all so much. Ms. Moody, have someone signed up to speak to the board in open session? Yes. I have it here. Ms. Leanna?
I'm sorry, I was just...
Yes, okay. That's okay. That's okay. Now is a time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. At this time, we have a request addressed the board from Davis Swam. He's representing AYSO, and it's... He'll tell us what he's wanting to talk to us about. Davis? Oh, he requested that we don't look at him because he was nervous on looking at us.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name's Davis Swam, and I'm the Regional Commissioner for the American Youth Soccer Organization here in Haywood County. For those of you that aren't familiar with AYSO, we are an all-volunteer, nonprofit organization dedicated to serve the youth of our community by offering a quality soccer program that is fun, fair, and safe. We've been part of the Haywood community for over 25 years, and last year had over 600 players ages four to 18 involved in the program. Our program is open to anyone interested in playing soccer, and no one has ever been turned away because of an inability to pay. One of the reasons for the success of this program has been the relationship we have with the schools. In the past, you've allowed us to various... You've allowed us to access to various fields at different schools so that we can have our practices during the week, and for that, we're very appreciative. Hopefully, the things we have done over the years, donating soccer balls to the elementary schools, assisting with the construction of the fieldhouse at the new Hazelwood Elementary School, and helping to develop the players, not only as athletes, but as good citizens who understand teamwork and commitment in some way, repays this generosity. Referring to the policy you're going to look at tonight about the field usage fees, I support its adoption. I see the need for it. It's not fair for the schools to bear the burden of extra costs to use the facilities, and such costs should be shouldered by the individuals who benefit from those extra costs. Hopefully... However, I hope you will bear in mind such nonprofit organizations as AYSO when the fee schedule is developed. We are here to serve the children and the young adults of Haywood County. We are here to serve the children and the young adults of Haywood County and that is something we all benefit from. All that we asking for is field space. We don't need access to the buildings, we don't need custodians on hand, and typically we don't need lights because we practice from 5:30 to 7:30. What I do need is a place for these children to play that is safe, where parents and players feel secure, and that is located in their community. That's what the schools have offered us in the past and I hope we can find a way for that to continue to be the case. I know that a team has been working on the fee schedule for almost a year now and that's no simple task. If I could be of any assistance with the process, please let me know. Again, thank you for the relationship we have with Haywood County Schools and I look forward to working with you as we move forward. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Board members, have any questions? Mr. Swam?
I appreciate you coming and speaking to us tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
What fields have you been using before?
This past year, we used Central Elementary. In years past, we've used Junealuska Elementary. I'm asking a principal right now if we can work out the details for another one of the schools. I don't want to mention that in case, in case he doesn't want me to. I mean, we can practice anywhere that's flat and that's what we're looking for. There's not a whole lot of flat ground in, in Haywood County. And again, I'm not opposed to paying a reasonable fee if that's necessary to cover costs, but the more we have to pay, the less money we have for our players. In case you're interested, it costs seventy-five dollars a year for a player to participate in the program. That gives them a uniform with two shirts, two pair of socks, and a pair of shorts. That gives them fourteen games on the weekend. That gives them about sixteen weeks of practice. That doesn't include that they can go to tournaments in Charlotte, Moorestown, Greenville, different places like that. So, the seventy-five dollars, we stretch it a long way, 'cause as I said, none of us are paid. We're all volunteers and we, we do it for the kids. Okay? If you have any questions, Ms. Moody has my phone number. Feel free to give me a call if you don't want to talk to me in front of everybody.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. And we'll, we'll be looking at that policy later on in the, in the agenda. Now, I'd like to recognize Dr. Naulty for an update on our drug testing program.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, staff and guests, the clicker's not working, so Leanna may have to click for me. According to School Board Policy SA-15, the Board of Education will receive an annual report regarding the impact of student drug testing each year. This is your report, so we're delivering it at this time. Students are placed in a random selection pool if they participate in extracurricular activities, if they drive a vehicle on campus, or if their parents request that they be in the pool. The purpose of the program is to help students avoid using illegal drugs by making parents aware of use and also by giving them the opportunity to say to someone who might offer something to them, "I'm sorry, but I'm in the testing pool, so I don't need to do that." So, it's really a preventive program. A positive test does not result in suspension from school. This is not a disciplinary program. It does, or it also does not report, result in a report to law enforcement. Students are not penalized academically if they test positive. They can lose extracurricular participation or driving privileges if they have multiple tests or if they don't follow through on the, the procedures associated with a positive test. Positive tests is only reported to parents and the school official at the school who manages the program at the school site. And again, there's no academic penalty. Parent notification is made by the school's drug testing administrator. That's usually one of the assistant principals at the school. There were eleven hundred and twelve students in the pool this last year and that represented about fifty-two percent, little over fifty-two percent of the, of the high school student population. Two hundred twenty-three students were tested. Last year, this represents about twenty-one percent of the eligible students, little over a fifth. Some students, because it is a random selection, some students are selected and tested more than once. This particular graph shows the number of positive tests since the inception of the program in 2006, 2007. You can see that we had a pretty low number in '09-10. We felt like we had some security breach with information and we tightened that up a little bit and, but you can see most of the time, there were between twelve and fourteen positives out of about, between two hundred and fifty and three hundred students given of the year, and somewhere between two and five percent positive test. It is also positive if a student refuses to take the test. In 2013, the test cost us a total of a little over six thousand dollars. That represents about twenty-four dollars a student. We still believe that is a very good investment in making sure parents are aware when we have a positive test and giving students an opportunity to say that they have to stay away from stuff because they're in the pool. This is your report and we'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
Dr. Naulty, we'll just note that you said from '09-10 to '10-11, those procedures that, that were put in place then are still there now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Still it mastered the same way?
Uh, yes, sir. And again, every test is a little different, but the things that we did to tighten up the confidentiality are still there.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments for Dr. Naulty?
Thank you very much for our annual review of our drug testing policy. Thank you very much. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the June 3rd closing regular session minutes and also the June 27th called and closed session minutes. At this time, I would entertain a motion that they be approved. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Kirkpatrick. We have a second from Ms. Handeville to approve the minutes as presented. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we will recognize Dr. Carol Douglas.
Mr. Chairman, board members, tonight I present to you our Title II Plan, which is the Improving Teacher Quality Grant. Our plan this year is done online with Title I and Title III, the migrant grant. So, it's done in different pieces. I usually present the whole plan to you, but it's all chopped up in different pieces, so I'm just doing a synopsis tonight. The plan goals are to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers, lower class size to improve teacher quality and retention, attend job fairs to recruit highly qualified teachers, support mentoring programs for new teachers, support teacher advancement and teacher recognition, provide meaningful professional development opportunities for teachers and principals, and to assure that a hundred percent of our teachers are highly qualified under no child left behind. And for the past three years, we have had a hundred percent highly qualified. Funding for this, which is based on a needs assessment, which includes parents, community members, employees of all levels, administrators. The funding is provided for beginning teacher support, for recruitment, a minimum of three teachers for class size reduction at targeted schools, and it's based on schools with the highest proportion of highly quali, of non-highly qualified teachers, I should say. And of course, ours are all one hundred percent, so that's not a factor. Schools that have the largest class size and schools with the lowest test scores. And also funding for highly qualified professional development and for tuition reimbursement to support teacher advancement and retention. So, our budget this year is three hundred and six thousand dollars and you can see that most of it goes to salary and benefits and then purchase services includes professional development and other things, other systems that are in place, and then supplies and materials. And tonight, I need your approval for this plan. Are there any questions on the floor?
Are there any questions for Dr. Douglas? If not, it'd be appropriate, we entertain a motion to approve the plan as presented.
Make a motion.
Mr. Harbin's made the motion, second to Mr. Francis, to approve the Title II Plan as presented. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Douglas. Now, I'd like to recognize Mr. Pat Smathers, who over the weekend has enlarged his family by numerous folks. I think Zeb and Ashley Hinson tied the knot this past weekend and so congratulations on that. So, you've gained, gained a big family now.
My, my new daughter-in-law is a teacher at Pisgah High School, so personnel department needs to change that from Ashley Hinson to Ashley Smathers effective as of about six o'clock Saturday.
She gets her social security card.
I've already told you, you don't need to, if you can't trust the board lawyer.
Don't trust him, Dr. Doug.
What more do you want me to do? Mr. Chairman, looking at item number twelve, this is a CTE PLTW agreement. It's actually a new program that I understand is being implemented in the county at initial and limited basis. I've looked at the contract. I can't honestly say I'm familiar with all the teaching substance of it, but legally it is sufficient and Dr. Garrett says it's what we need, so legally it is fine.
Dr. Garrett concur, so this time we'll entertain a motion that we approve the PLTW agreement, which is Project Lead the Way Agreement.
Right.
Ms. Milner's made the motion, second to Mr. Rogers, that we approve the PLTW agreement as presented. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. And you have one other item, Mr. Smathers?
Yes, item number thirteen. This is the Annual Health Department Agreement between the, the school system and the Health Department, where they provide certain services to the school system. This is an annual contract, only the dates have changed essentially, nothing's been changed from the previous years.
Okay. This time, we entertain a motion that contract with the Health Department be approved.
Motion.
Mr. Hinson's made the motion, second to Mr. Harbin. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smathers. When you see the newlyweds, tell them that we're happy for them and congratulations. Now, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bob Phillips for some child nutrition bids.
Members of the board, our child nutrition director is in conference this week, so she asked me to take her place to present these bids for your approval. We have one new bid that is a bread bid, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, fifty-five dollars for the Perkston Quop, which includes Henderson, Buncombe, and Haywood Counties. Then we have continuation bid for Marvins Produce and it's a second year of a five-year term. And we have a continuation bid for miscellaneous beverage with Pepsi and U.S. Food Service, the fourth year of a five-year term. And a milk bid for Pet Dairy and it's the fifth year of a five-year term. Food and Supplies bid, U.S. Food Service, and it's a rolling bid, fourth year of a five-year term. And it's in a co-op with Buncombe, Henderson, Wilkes, Cowell, and Lincoln Counties. And a sanitation and safety system bill with Portion Pat, which is a fourth year of a five-year contract and it's in cooperation with Macon County. So, we request your approval of these bids.
Okay. This time, we entertain a motion to approve the child nutrition bids as presented.
So, move.
Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion, I hear a second.
Say.
Second by Ms. Milner. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Now, we'll have the policies and...
This is a new treat for Dr. Naulty because I think Mr. Trantham is no longer, he's retired.
Mr. Trantham is on the agenda, but he is not here. And every time I see him, he looks better. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, staff and guests, I did actually chair that policy committee for five or six years, way back in the nineties and, but I'm glad to only do it with a month with Carol Douglas's help. Carol and I both worked together on several policies, conducted a policy committee meeting. Two of your members were at that meeting and we do have some policies to bring before you tonight for, I have to go look up there for first reading. We do the second reading first. That makes sense, doesn't it? The first one is fundraising, School Board Policy A1. There are essentially two proposed changes to this policy. One is we did at one time ask our schools to do all their fundraising requests at one point in time, typically in the fall and September, and that never worked, especially schools that had second semesters and club activities and sports in the second semester. So, now we're proposing a month in advance of the activity. And then the other thing that we have done in practice for years was to, from time to time, do some fundraising for benevolence or support civic organizations, and I don't want to list too many, 'cause I'll leave someone out, but for the ARC or Sarges or the Red Cross or the Heart Association or things like that. And we've put some language in that would follow our practice. So, that's the, those are the two primary proposed changes to A1 first reading. We do them one at a time?
Yeah. A1 will be tabled for thirty days for public input.
Okay. As part of our realignment and trying to make our office more efficient after losing a number of staff member over a period of time, we are trying to streamline with new technology pupil reassignments. Last year, I processed personally some five hundred and forty pupil reassignment forms. Ninety-five percent, thereabouts, were just fine. They were approved initially to go into a school and they remained in good standing because of attendance and behavior. And we were requiring a form on a student who was in good standing and had good reason to be out of district every single year. So, the primary proposal here is to just do the pupil reassignment upon entry into a school for the first time. So, for example, if a child went to an elementary school and they were entering that school out of district in first grade, that approval would stay in place until they exited and went to middle school. They could lose their out-of-district assignment because of attendance and tardies or lots of inappropriate behavior, but their approval would stay in place until they reach sixth grade and then they would need to make another request if they were requesting out-of-district in sixth grade and likewise, high school. That is the primary language change in pupil reassignment. That should take us from five hundred and forty forms to probably seventy-five or eighty a year. The process is a little more thorough.
On A4, pupil reassignment, it'll be tabled for thirty days for public input.
Yes. The next policy for first reading is CR4. This is the policy that David spoke in terms of the fee schedule about earlier and I think appropriately so. You had asked us some time ago to look at this policy to make sure it was legal, to make sure that taxpayers weren't bearing the burden for costs not related to direct school activities, and also to look at maybe for-profit activities. And we have done that over many, many months with lots of committee meetings and webinars that board members attended and everything else. And this, our... And this are, this is our best attempt at a first draft. I do concur that we will need to move slowly and wisely, because any change in this area will, we have lots of facility use contracts, and it would be a big change for the community. But essentially, what it does is it breaks groups down into school-sponsored, and that would be schools or any organizations that are in place simply to support schools, like boosters, or PTAs, or PTOs, groups like that. And then you would have non-school, nonprofit, and essentially those are our groups, like AYSO, that have all volunteer staff or some other governmental agency having a government activity, and then you would have for-profit. But we'll give you that for first reading, and know that it might take some time to work through this policy.
CR4 will be tabled for 30 days for public input.
The next policy for first reading is P1, Hours of Personnel. This policy actually had a conflict in it regarding overtime. It had two statements in it that were conflicting. And what happened, you may remember sometime back, we moved the beginning of the week from Saturday to Sunday. And we have researched this. Dr. Douglas in particular has looked at it, and our best advice is that time and a half be paid when a person reaches 40 hours regardless of that day. And we moved it to Sunday, as you will remember, if we had snow or a flood or something, and people could come in over the weekend and help us with that. And then they may or may not have time off later in the week, depending upon our needs. But, but the change is highlighted on page two and should correct that, those contradictory statements.
Okay. So P1, Hours of Personnel, will be tabled for 30 days for public input.
And the last policy for first reading was actually first reading last month, and we would like, because there are significant changes, for this to be considered first reading again. Last month, we brought you essentially the last line under the general policy statement, SA8, Minimum Requirements for Participation in Athletics and Other Extracurricular Activities. Last month, we brought you except, exceptions apply to students who have early dismissal during their senior year. And that's a pretty simple change that we have added to several of our policies, academic and extracurricular. But what the state has done, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association has done since we brought that first reading, actually, they did it before that, but they, we had some workshops on it and training on it. And there is a significant eligibility penalty for students who inappropriately transfer between member schools, schools that are members of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And it's essentially a 365-day eligibility loss if they inappropriately transfer. We don't have any say in that if it's outside of Haywood County, if it's Haywood to another district or from another district to here. That's all handled by the state and their review panel. We do have some authority, you do as a board, to make decisions about students who transfer between member schools within a school district. We, I met with high school coaches and athletic directors, and then again, we talked about this at the policy committee, and, and we are recommending that we use our current pupil reassignment policy and, and not lose any eligibility for students, because we're using our local student reassignment policy. Most of our athletes who transfer are not athletes who are going to make a living playing sports, and most of them do not attempt to transfer because of athletics, and we just felt like our local policy is the way to go.
Okay, so we'll have SA08 tabled for 30 days for public input for a second time, because there were some changes in.
First reading for a second time, yes, sir.
It says P15, and that should be P1, Hours of Employment.
For a second reading?
Third line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong line. I'm sorry.
She's, she's good. I did the same thing. Members of the board, for your consideration for approval, we have C1 graduation requirements. That brings us more in line with Common Core, that we have now taught for a year, and we're anxiously awaiting our first year of test results in October. Report cards, progress reports, and student assessment, employee leave, and the suggestion policy, which we deleted and rewrote at your request. And to my knowledge, we have not received any feedback on those that have been on the table.
At this time, we could entertain a motion to approve them as a group. C1, C4, P15, and SB8. Mr. Moore?
I don't know what to do on.
You want to do one separate?
Yeah, let's do them separate, please.
Let's do it separate. Okay, board members, I'll entertain a motion for C1, Graduation Requirements. Mr. Rogers made a motion. Do I hear a second? Mr. Francis, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we entertain a motion on C4.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Henson. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we entertain a motion to approve P15.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Nobody's wanting to make a motion tonight. You do get your name in the minutes.
Three times in there.
There is a benefit. It's public credit. Okay. Who made the motion? I'm sorry. Mr. Rogers made the motion, seconded by Ms. Milner. Okay. Are there any questions or discussion on P15? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor of P15, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we entertain a motion to approve SB8. Do I hear a motion to do so? Ms. Milner's made the motion. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Ms. Shandival. Are any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And this may not be doable, but reading down to procedures. Our very first statement is, "The Haywood County Board of Education recognizes that the community members, parents, and school system employees are the most valuable resource in the continuous improvement of all facets of the school operation." It's the very first open statement of the policy. And then in procedures, I think it would be wise if the superintendent could appoint at least one board member to be on that review committee. I mean, it may be too late, but I just, I just think that, I mean, if it needs a table,
That can come under procedure.
I mean, she's still appointed, but I just feel, I just feel that it needs to be that in the procedure, that at least one board committee be, it's a quarterly meeting.
Okay, review committee, let's just, without objection, can we, let's just move and put the word, must have called one board member, do that work? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Yeah, you'd have a, you'd have a.
What is a better term?
Yeah, not need, just, I mean.
Shout, or shouts, is a better word.
Shout, means it will, yeah. A review committee.
A review committee would be appointed by the superintendent, and shout includes a board member.
Yeah.
One Haywood County Board of Education.
Member. Is that okay?
That's great.
Is there any objection from any of the board members for adding that verbiage? It gives you representation, and I don't think it, it would probably include a board member anyway.
Well, you're going to have to let your motion die, or you're going to, you don't have to amend it.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented originally, please raise your hand. Motion fails unanimously. That's the first time in a good while I've had that. Okay, now then, at this time, we entertain a motion to approve SB8 as amended. Ms. Milner's made the motion, seconded by Ms. Shandival. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Now do you have a wait of 30 days since you've changed?
No, sir.
Okay.
We asked for, I asked for that objection.
That's all you have to say, is yes or no?
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion, comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think it was, is well worth the effort to do that. Okay. Now we'll hear from, and thank you, Dr. Nolte, and the policy committee's hard work. I know there's a lot of policies that are being discussed and that do have ramifications in our community, so we, we want to proceed, but do so carefully. And I know you have been and will. At this time, we recognize Mr. Jim Francis from our policy, I mean, from our finance committee, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee has met, and we have reviewed the monthly reports presented to us by Mr. Phillips. Everything seemed to be in order, so at this time, I would like to bring before the board a motion to approve the monthly financial.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Francis to approve the monthly financial reports. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Henson. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from the finance committee?
That's all we have right now.
Thank you very much for your hard work, and that committee's hard work. I know they work hard.
I just want to congratulate our finance department again for their award that they received.
Well deserved, well deserved. They keep us informed. Thank you. Now we'll recognize Mr. Harbin, our Chair of our Building and Grounds Committee, for a special resolution.
We've asked to be a part of this resolution, supporting a feasibility study for an 8-inch gravity line along U.S. 2374. And what this does, it gets gravity sewer to where we may need it for future development at Tuscaloosa High School. I join and ask us to join with the Economic Development Committee, our county commissioners, and the Lake Junalauska Water Board to approve the feasibility study and see if the state can fund that for us.
In talking with county commissioners, they seem to be in support of this, and through the economic development, I think other entities have been supportive of this. It would be a definite benefit for Tuscaloosa High School for any future development in the track area down there, just for restrooms, et cetera.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Harbin, seconded by Mr. Rogers, that we approve the resolution supporting the North Carolina Department of Transportation, actually asking for the sewer line. Any question or discussion on, or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Harbin, and the Building and Grounds. I understand you attended the meeting, too, so that was good.
I did, and Walt Leatherwoods on, or I got one right. Didn't have to correct anything I said tonight.
He did good. Thank you. Now we recognize Dr. Ann Garrett for our personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, we have nine separation from employments, and we have nine employee status changes. For your approval, we have 30 employments, 11 employee status changes, one contracted service, two substitutes, 17 non-employee contractors, 61 employee coaching contracts, and nine volunteer services.
I'll entertain a motion, we approve the personnel as presented. Mr. Francis has made the motion, seconded by Mr. Harbin, to approve the personnel as presented. Are there any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's a pleasure to introduce our middle slash high school supervisor, Dr. Carol Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members, for this opportunity to move down the hall. I've enjoyed working with you for the past eight years in human resources, and I'll miss you, but I'll still be around, so thank you very much. And I know that you will support whoever goes into that position.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. We know where your office is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Along with Mr. Francis, again, since I've come on this board, everybody to my rights comes since me, too, from this side. All our department that's been recognized tonight, our finance department's had to do was shuffle, scramble, and make do. And people ask me about being a board member, you know, and I even think about my buddy Walt, I'm about, well, you know, it's not as much, it's not how it used to be. But this is all I've ever known, it's all most of this board's ever known, it's what you guys have done to help us, and I really do appreciate it. I really do.
Thank you. Any other bids to be come before the board? If not, meeting adjourned.